But here we go. Okay. First item on our agenda is the Oxford update on COVID-19 response, town management.
Yes, thank you. As you can see this evening, the entire board is with us and our Board of Health Chair is also here. We have a number of tasks to try to accomplish this evening. I will ask all of you to speak up because we don't have our regular cable filming, so I will ask you to speak up as best as possible so that we can hear what you have to say. But we're going to start, the first item on the agenda is to give you an update on the COVID response on the part of Oxford. You'll see in your packets a memorandum that went out on Friday evening that tried to capture all of the different measures that this town has taken, really starting very, very early. And you will see from that memo, which I know you have all looked at, I'm just going to highlight a few things. And then I think both Carrie and I are going to talk about why we're here this evening to give you some further updates. So the thing I think that's really important for the town to recognize is that in terms of building closures, there has been an evolving number of declared emergencies. We had the governor declare an emergency, we've had the president declare an emergency. We now are going to later on this evening declare our own local emergency and declare it for a number of reasons. But before we get to that, we all know that we're facing the pandemic, which is known as the coronavirus, also COVID-19. The town, as a way to mitigate the transmission of this virus, we are very similar to many other communities trying to do our best to prevent the community spread. There are a number of actions we have already taken, and they are posted on our website and they have been posted on our Facebook page. There are a number of things that the Board of Health agents has worked with, my management team and every department head, to try to make sure that we're informed with the latest updated information coming from the state and the federal government. And I will tell you, it is a tsunami of information. And the thing that we have to do is make sure that we can make sense of that and how we operationalize it. So it sounds very easy, you close a building and you don't think about it, you know, again. It's not. We have essential services, we are government, we're going to try to provide those and to maintain the safety of our employees as much as possible, particularly our public safety and first responders. But we also have people in addition that are providing very essential services to our seniors. And for that, you will see that we have taken a number of steps, either in terms of building closures, including direct access to our senior center, but keeping our vans running for medical appointments, for runs to the pharmacy and also for shopping needs. We've gone on a very, very rigorous cleaning protocol system, any building in which our employees are working in and/or if there is a transportation vehicle which our employees and/or residents are using, which is the senior vans. There is a rigorous sanitizing protocol that actually began today. We in advance had contracted with ElectraClean and they have already been sanitizing our ambulances in a stepped-up fashion and now did both our senior vans today. In addition, the WRTA and our local drivers are also implementing additional sanitizing. So even though the senior center would appear closed for any congregate meal or gathering, our director is working there as the most essential employee and is making sure that if there are outreach services and messages that need to get out to our seniors, like today, she did a series of robo calls to those residents who typically come to the senior center to make sure they understood that we're not having those kind of gatherings. But should they face an emergency or concern or they need assistance, that is going to be the way that we find out. They will have that direct contact. Another public building we have is the library. Initially, the library wanted to stay open, but by Friday, there was a number of libraries that had reported, including one which someone came in to return some books, had just said they were sorry that they were overdue, they had a temperature of 100 degrees, they said, and they still felt lousy, and here were the books. So that was not a very comforting thing to be shared among all the other library directors. So our library, as of Friday night, we decided to close the library to the public, it has been posted, and we also went to a skeletal crew. And that means just our real full-time people are working inside. They will still take telephone calls, they've set up their web accounts so that they can answer and perhaps even get the resources to people who may be at home, but the public is not going to be able to enter. There will be a major sanitizing effort in the library because for a long time, the library has been a place where people go and they use the computers that are there and their hands are all over books. And we have both kids and seniors that have been going there for a long time. So we've implemented not only those kind of cleaning protocols, but they understand too that they're wearing gloves when they're taking in new books and they're also implementing the way that they want to sanitize before they actually, you know, take on the task of putting books back and the like. They feel that this is a good time for them to embark on getting themselves structured for the recovery and what they expect will be a barrage of, you know, interest on the other side, when we get to the other side of this. The town hall has moved to a one-person, one-office staffing plan. I told employees that if there were three people in an office and all three are capable of doing the job, we'd have one person who works in the office. These were all offices that had either windows or very safe distances. Those other employees, whether they are the ones in the library or the ones we're asking to stay home, any employee that is being required to stay home to keep people as healthy as possible because we really don't know who's infected at this point. And should we have somebody who is working in an office become ill, if we have somebody who's not here and is able to maintain their health, then we will have somebody who could do an essential function, like a town clerk, with our assistant town clerks maybe in the queue. So that's why it's important initially to have one person, one office. Do I expect that to change? Sure. When these numbers go up, I expect that to change. But for now, I have seen, not on a running basis, but I do see people coming in for essential things that they want to get done before they get an order where they have to stay in place. So we're going to try to do that as long as possible and just because this is the main hub for government. As far as our police and fire, there are no more public access points into our public safety buildings. I felt it was very important to make sure that there were not just visitors coming in, whether it's family or someone who wants to go and check up and see how our first responses are, delivering them something to eat or anything like that, they'll not be allowed to enter into the buildings. Our police chief has effectively immediately, as we have, you know, there is no approval of vacation time or anything, even if they had it beforehand, all of that has been stopped at this point in time and we're going to deal with that later on. So all of former approved leaves are no longer going to be honored at this point. Anybody who happens to be away on vacation right now and they've been on a cruise, they're not coming back to work anytime too soon, they will be, and they have been asked, because we had at least one employee that that happened to, they'll be asked to stay at home until we know they're completely, and that is somebody who is in law enforcement. So we'd like to have them come back as soon as possible, once we know they're in the clear. The police chief has also made sure that the training center, which has had everything from Little League and the like, use that center, training room, all of that has, all of those events have been canceled. And that is one of the things that was really important for them to do. I know a lot of people are concerned about the fact that we have our food pantry, the community center is closed for all programs. We do have a real natural welcome mat that has led to a lot of children being able to come in and use the gym. In fact, when Webster closed before Oxford did, the kids from Webster were up here using our gym. So the problem here is, we know that the fitness rooms are just not a good place for anybody to be right now. They're perfect breeding grounds for any time, you can't really do a good sterilization. So those fitness programs are all gone, not gone, but stopped. And then the other problem was, you can't leave the building open to use the gym or anything else. But the food pantry or Oxford food shelf is there. So I've worked with John Neill and the director to allow them entry into the food pantry with the understanding that they will prep boxes for already the families that they serve and any families that might come further, and they will do curbside pickup. So they will not be allowed to come into the building and they will be, you know, putting those out and organizing that with their service clients. So those are the major areas, I think, that have to do with the functionality of how government is. Our DPW trucks also on a sanitizing regime. This town hall is being sanitized twice a day, both in midday and also after the doors close. That means every touchable surface where the public could possibly be and/or employees, that's light switches, that's our elevator buttons, that's the pushbox, that's the door handles, it's the banister coming up the stairs, any place like that, we're doing a very thorough virus side sanitizer that's happening. That is a protocol that actually started in earnest over the weekend and today. And then there is building sanitizing also taking place. So I'm hoping that we can keep the possible transmission down as much as possible for as long as we remain open. I didn't know if you want to say anything regarding the building closures and your opinion for that?
Nope, not that.
Okay. So then the next thing was to have the board understand, we had convened our management team, everybody got together to talk to us about the major questions that they had about how are we going to deal with sick employees or employees that notify their direct supervisor or department head, they're not feeling well. We wanted to streamline all of that communication to go directly to my office, HR and the Board of Health agent and our Director of Nursing Services, who actually is our public health investigator for communicable diseases. So we've made sure that all of these kinds of potential questions, including ones from the school, are being funneled up here. And every single case that has been questionable, we've had a couple of employees not feeling well, headache, maybe, you know, cold, all of those cases were told to, you know, stay in place at home and they'd be followed up by the Board of Health Agent and/or the public health nurse. So those things are in place for employees. And the other piece of it that I think is worth talking about is the Acting Superintendent continues to work on and is working on trying to make sure the two meals of the day that some students are very dependent on, both breakfast and lunch, they're working on a plan to be able to hopefully be able to have that continue in some way, either a curbside pickup, but these, you know, children may not be able to get here, so for parents that understand that they are dependent on that, they may be able to come get that. And if not, we may use existing staff to actually, you know, make a delivery that would be external to a house, especially if we're going to continue to have some staff work, but the building is closed. The schools are going through a very vigorous, from what I understand, cleaning protocol as well. I expect to have an update with the Acting Superintendent tomorrow. All department heads are understanding that, they know that they have a new model for communicating. We also have our designated emergency director, who is the fire chief, he has circulated our operations plan so that we can start a continuous operations plan or continuity of operations plan to actually document things. This is going to be very important for us, even though the governor has declared a state of emergency, I'm going to ask this board in a little while to actually declare it at the local level. And, you know, normal MEMA response is to not necessarily something that's happening to the entire country, but, you know, when we have a hurricane or a storm event, you know, that affects the whole state or a couple states, that's one thing. We have no idea how massive this is going to be in terms of the, both the federal and the state's needs for recovery assistance. And even though we fall under the jurisdiction of a declared order from the governor or from the president, we need to make sure, and you'll see, there are some communities that understand that, you know, sometimes it's very important to do the local declaration because the recovery standards and ability to qualify may change over time, particularly if it becomes, you know, a huge multi-multi-billion dollar impact to every, you know, community. For instance, you know, the federal government might block grant everything to the state, but then have other qualifiers, you know, that you could be eligible for, but if you didn't make a declared state of emergency at the local level, you'll be excluded. So I want to make sure that we don't leave anything to chance, and there may be foundations and other places that say if the board has taken a vote and they have put it in writing that they have declared this emergency, that they will be eligible for any kind of assistance that comes along. And also, we might find that there's generosity that is invoked, you know, from the private sector, and we might not always be able to accept funds the way we normally do in terms of donations. So a lot of times for grants, if you have a vote that says, not only we declare this and we want to actually apply for this, but we also will accept any money. I think we've had that vote before where you have to vote to accept money should it come from a federal or state agency and grant program. So we're going to do that tonight too, so that we're covered for that, even if it's a year from now, we'll be able to do that because they'll be asking, did you ever take a vote for that? So we're doing some things preemptively. Obviously, the events with 50 people or more has now gone down to 25, and I understand the president said something like 10, but it's not in order, you know, it's a suggestion. So right now, what started out as potentially allowing restaurants and eateries and our local drinking establishments to stay open, they today received, and our Board of Health Agent went out and hand-delivered the new order that came within the last 24 hours from the governor, which was, one, all schools would be shut down, two, regular crowds of 25 or more would be banned, and that the closure except for fast food and/or pick-up and go or drive-through delivery was going to be allowed for any food establishment, but inside congregating for a meal would be banned. Most of the food establishments knew this in advance today, even though Tom had gone and, you know, we did the right thing by serving them the order. We also wanted them to know that even though they might not have a license to do a drive-through or drive-up delivery, that that was going to be something that was being relaxed by the state. You know, obviously, you want them to have the same kind of, you know, serve safe that they would do if, you know, patrons were inside. But this is a way of trying to keep the opportunity for food and keep some of that ability of our restaurants to continue to earn some revenue during this very difficult state.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure. Please do.
So he also visited our two gyms that we have in town as well, just to reiterate the order of the 25 people and congregating in one area. I think there was still some question on whether or not the order said for them to close completely down or limit the number of people coming in. So I think there's still some question there on how that order has been interpreted for those gyms in town. So I think we'll just have to keep an eye on those two areas as well because those would be high-risk areas.
What about your coffee shops? They were okay?
No, no. That's the same issue. That's the same issue.
They can go in and take a coffee and go, but you can't sit.
So they can't sit at the counter or at the table?
Exactly, no. No congregating. That's the biggest part about it. You can go in, grab your stuff and leave, but you can't sit and enjoy it.
Yeah, it's like drive-up delivery. And, you know, what we're hoping, and that's why Tom was visiting him, is that if you can keep people, excuse me, one at a time coming in, because we know Carl's diner is very small, hopefully people will use good sense, you know, we might go around making some recommendations through our Board of Health Agent, we'll see how it all goes. But, you know, that would be, because you don't want everybody lining up inside to go pick up their Chinese order to go, right? This is where we have to just get the food establishments to do some things that are a little bit different.
What about the line at Carol Lee, which has been more than 25 people deep all day long?
Well, that would be something that actually gets kicked in, right, you know, for tomorrow because I don't know if they would consider edibles, but I will bring it to the Board of Health Agent's attention so that maybe we need to actually talk to them about it. They are probably in one of the better positions to be able to modify and stagger. But I would also say and argue that they have a van that is providing people services and that would be something where even if they were providing one per thing, they should also have some kind of cleaning protocol.
Or at least make them not stand, like, touching in line.
Right.
They're right next to each other closer than we are here.
So I think this whole, you know, initiative came down last night because we realized, you know, local establishments, including ones in this town, were like, hey, those kids are not going to have school, you don't feel like cooking, come on down. And that's what was happening, and especially in preparation for St. Patrick's Day. The bars in Boston were just full, the college students around, and people, it's not real to people.
Right.
And I think Carrie and I, as clinicians, need to emphasize to this town, this is real. This is an incredible wake-up call. We're not even where the numbers are really going to spike. It doesn't feel like it's there yet, and we get it, people don't understand, but the testing has been very slow. Now we're starting to do some testing, but people, you know, the longer that we can suppress that, you know, they keep calling it a curve, I call it a wave because we either, you know, prevent that wave from breaking or we're going to be in a, you know, in a very difficult position. So, but as a community, you know, we're not expected to be all clinicians, I get it. But we are trying to heed the best public health advice. And so, having said that, I was going to say that, you know, we've taken into consideration all kinds of things. We, you know, are going to talk when I have this new, you know, declaration order that even today, meeting with the inspectional division, meeting with our electrical inspector, our building inspector and our plumbing and gas inspector. We have new procedures set up, they have all signed those, you'll see that in your packet, that from today's point out that the building and electrical and plumbing and gas services, inspectional services are going to abide by the following, they're instituting it, that all 110 inspections, which are required by state law, there is an ability for the town to actually postpone the actual due dates for those things to happen. Those are really the public assembly places, it's your churches, you know, it's your auditoriums, just things like that. For now, knowing those places are closed, they're allowing, you know, we're adopting that because of the state of emergency, these guys are saying, we're not going, we're going to be postponing those and focusing more on the types of inspectional services where we can protect our employees the best. We don't have a real long-running list of people who can tell us when a building is safe or when an electrical thing has been installed accurately. So the way that they are going to handle this is that all new construction, outdoor kinds of places where there's nobody living there, they'll continue to go and do those onsite inspections, if there's trenches that need to be evaluated, anything from the exterior, maybe it's an electrical service that's new on a house, those kinds of things. But for people who are doing rehab, say they've redone their cellar or they put a dormer on, if they're looking for their final inspection, each one of these inspectors are going to require or allow, if they refuse to go inside, we do have a number of our inspectional staff that have at-risk people living at home. And so they do not want to transmit that to their loved ones if they were to be in contact. So we want to advise them, anybody who is looking for that final inspection, we're going to allow them to, with a signed affidavit and photographs and video, be able to meet with the actual, or submit online to our inspectional people, the final work that they had done. At any point in time, the inspector can ask for additional photographs because they can't see something as well as they would hope. And then if they're satisfied with that with a signed affidavit, they'll be able to release their final permit. This is a way of us keeping those guys safe. And another component is that we are going to look at providing, we already have, the personal protective equipment that they would need, from gloves to an N95 mask, so that we can make sure that if there was something that was truly life-threatening, that we would have the ability to help them with that. So that's just today. Like I said, I told you that the police department has suspended all their leave requests and is entering into their own internal ways of dealing with both the courts, which is an evolving thing right now, from everything from how they're going to post bail and the like. They, I've included in the packet here, there is information that is sort of the guideline for our police department coming from the Massachusetts Police Chiefs Association on how they can help our Department of Public Health and our Board of Selectmen and any department head that has a directive that they really are trying to enforce, they will be there to try to support us in any step of the way. And they're hoping that people will heed the sage advice from our public health entities and be wise and not be contrarians to what is really expert opinion. So having said those things, I would like to bring your attention to the need for Oxford to declare a state of emergency. I don't know, Carrie, you have anything else you want to add?
So yeah, there was just a couple other things that I wanted to add that are still some unknowns, right? That are some things that I've been communicating with the Board of Health Agent on. So with the gatherings of 25 people or more and reading through some of the language from the governor, I'm concerned about hair salons, nail salons, those areas where they're congregating, there are a few in town that could easily have 25 people if everybody decided to go get their nails and pedicures done. So that's something that we're going to kind of have to keep our eyes on. Reading through the order, there's nothing specific about it, it talks about large gatherings, but not so much that small or confined area. The other thing that I did have a question about were some of our retail stores like Home Depot and some of those, those are actually excluded from the order because it's intent that they're going in, grabbing stuff and leaving and not really hanging around and congregating. And that's really what that order is trying to do, is to mitigate the congregating, but going in and going out is fine. So the biggest areas, I think, that I do have a concern about, and I'm hoping will be addressed soon by the state, is around those places like nail salons. I know some are actively closing down themselves for that two-week period of time. I'm not sure if some of our local businesses will do that.
So one of the reasons we want to do this declaration, it will empower us to make these kinds of decisions at the local level. We've made decisions that other towns haven't, and we've used that empowerment based on what we feel our department heads and our boards or commissions feel are important. So this would be another good reason why we should do this declaration, because it's not that we're just following the state. If we have to suspend something, just like what we've done with the inspectional services, if we find a need to tweak or to get our Board of Health Agent to even be more proactive because we're concerned, you know, that's what we'll be doing. You know, the state might have made a declarative for EEE that, you know, communities should think about certain time periods. Well, we came up with what it was that we thought was important for us and, you know, and how that would apply to whether it was schools or school property. So, you know, the Board of Selectmen, you know, especially for properties that the town owns, obviously are really in charge of that, but with a public health crisis, we want to do things in partnership that might go beyond the boundaries. And our local boards of health are empowered to be able to help us make those decisions. So I agree with her that we might be revisiting on making, you know, our own local orders related to people's potential exposures, but I think with time, people are going to understand that we haven't thought about everything. And that's very clear by what's happened from, you know, last week to where we are today. And even today, there's more and more that's coming out.
Mr. Jay, let me ask a couple.
Sure.
Sure. I just have, understanding this is evolving, right, a lot of things are happening in some way. I have a couple of questions that probably have been addressed, but I just want to make sure.
Sure.
So at the Oxford, at the police station, is the walk-in area into the dispatch So, at the Oxford, at the police station, is the walk-in area in to the dispatch center, is that going to remain open?
I would say that it shouldn't be. I think that they should have as a buzzer to find out what is it that the person needs. So if there is a reason for someone to come in, the police should be able to screen that with dispatch. Nobody should just be showing up. And if they are, that would be, you know, the situation that I would have anticipated, is that people aren't just coming into the lobby. If we can address people's concerns exterior, and if that means that somebody's looking for a particular piece of information or update, well, then, you know, a particular officer can be called. We can look into it and they can be, you know, explain that outside or can be told, you know, through an intercom system that they can be handled in a different way. So, you know, I mean, this has implications from everything, from, you know, posting bail and arresting people. And, you know, even though we're gonna keep our cruises and hopefully all of that gets minimized, the court system is already saying that they're giving hints that they're not gonna process things the same way. So it just changes the whole notion that we're used to in procedures. And those are still evolving within the courts themselves.
With the, with the request that you're going to make for us to declare the local state of emergency, where are we with implementing an EOC? In the sense of, again, I don't know enough about EOCs to know the answer to kind of understand and then navigating. And there's probably people on this board that are better able to do that. But if we're going to go into an emergency, does that mean that we need to open up some sort of EOC? Now, let me clarify, EOCs are often thought of as like shelters, right, for weather, so forth, right?
They can be.
But, you know, can an EOC be established from the perspective of, you know, helping citizens, senior citizens or the young? Or, I don't know the extent and the breadth of that, and I don't know if anyone here knows this either, maybe you do, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I, I look at this as if we activate our Emergency Operation Command Center. We've already activated the first level of that where we have our Emergency Service Director coordinating. So, you know, that person has been in charge, and I put in here the several different things that the Fire Chief has done. He's compiled a list of upcoming events that at that time involved 50 people. We're refining that so that all of those things would be canceled. He's distributed the Meme of Reporting and Tracking of Documents so that each department head really starts to document the things that are happening and the strains that, and the breaking of routines so that we can document those things now. Because the hardest thing to do after a real true, whether it's a public health event or any other kind of emergency crisis happens, is to go back and try to document what happened during the height of the crisis. So that is something that we're doing along with having that continuity of operations. We are meeting, right now it's weekly, for the department heads. We are going to talk about how we're going to do that potentially more from a remote perspective. But for now, if we can keep that distance for the major players to be able to talk about and keep people informed. So that pool is gonna get smaller, and it's gonna involve mostly our public health agents, our Department of Public Health nurse, who is charged with keeping us apprised of communicable diseases, and it will be our public safety team. There's no need to necessarily have other department heads, they were there preliminarily, there unless it's something that's gonna truly affect them. And so I expect that, you know, number of department heads will be shrunk this week. But the information will keep flowing. So to the point of when do we enact that, that's typically if we find that the state resources are not there. You know, say the National Guard is triggered and, you know, we really need to completely change the way that the services or this concern about the public safety, more so than community transmission and things like that. I think then we would get into a situation where we would, you know, start that. But right now, we have fabulous people in place, doing the job that they gotta do. And, you know, it's unfortunately a waiting game, but we know too much about this. So we're waiting, but we know that the outcome is, you know, going to materialize in a way that isn't going to be very comforting to how it might impact our community. But that's a good question.
I have two other brief questions.
Sure.
Sure. Are we in any, are we in any position for employees to not be paid? Are we in any positions from that perspective?
No, what we, the only people, so what we're saying to employees, if you get sick and you, whether it's the flu or you have a bad headache or, and you happen to be somebody who's working, and even if you're not working, but you're remoting from home right now, I would ask those people to do what they normally do, which is use your sick time. If you're well and you're at home, or you're asymptomatic and you weren't sick the whole time that you've been home and then become sick, well, again, if you're sick, please use your sick time. Employees know that and they're being told that through their supervisors or their department heads. But anybody who's been asked to leave the building, I have given directions and orders to staff who may have already an immunocompromised state about them for their own protection and safety. Some of them, you know, it was a very dramatic kind of announcement, but they understand, they wanna be safe. Anybody we're asking to not be here at work, whether they're a regular part-time employee or a full-time employee, if they're staying at home and they're remoting in or anything, they will be paid. You know, we have already in our budget, you know, those people would be paid. I wanna make sure those people can come back and be ready there for recovery efforts. I think it's important to be compassionate, I think this town understands that. There's no reason for that. But, you know, seasonal help and people who might be like a student intern or something, those people, no. You know, we ask them to come back when we're ready to use them and, you know, and be able to assist them.
Okay. And then my last question is, from a resident perspective, if they have questions about anything, are we, do A, do we have anything in place for them to shoot us like an email or, or, you know, I hate, I hate that.
You read my emails.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So I've already talked with our MIS Director or overseer, which is Katie, and also our regular MIS people. We are setting up a regular email for anybody that has a COVID-19 question. And that's probably gonna be the name of it. We've talked about it before this meeting, actually, about an hour and a half ago. So that will be set up, we're hoping, by tomorrow. Our normal emails have always been set up with, you know, people internal, you know, as employees and stuff. So the external component, we have to just make sure that the administrator is gonna be someone who can take whatever information. And that way we can track what kind of questions we're getting, instead of every department trying to field it on their own. And then also put people to the right kinds of questions. So that is gonna happen. So I'm glad you asked that, there's so much to talk about, right?
Right.
Exactly. So, you know, we're doing that. I do want this board to also know, we've been notified by National Grid that they will not show up for their typical required appearance for any poll hearings in the future. That was a major decision that came from National Grid. And also that the State House has gone to a skeletal crew and is not open to the public. But they are going to be taking up specific pieces of legislation. I expect there will be something about planning and zoning, you know, statutes where, you know, the postponement and the clock usually starts ticking when somebody has, you know, submitted documents for certain types of review and plans. That is gonna be, we're gonna ask for that to be modified. And of course, the big question is, how are we gonna do our normal things? Like, we have an upcoming town meeting. You know, the state is giving leniency to communities to decide about postponement of town meeting and also postponement of elections. We're not there yet, you know, I really feel we're not there yet. They're also allowing towns to decide for reductions in quorum, and that's a separate discussion this board has to have. And I think, you know, we're not there to make that determination quite yet. You know, and I would put that as a separate agenda item for this board to entertain.
I would like to, oh, I'm sorry. I would like to just add one more thing. So in terms of the emails coming through with residents asking questions, I think it's really important that if they have questions specific about the disease, disease processes or things from the state, that we direct them to either the CDC or the Mass Department of Public Health.
Yes.
Because ultimately, they're the ones where we're getting our guidance from. So we wanna direct them there. If they have specific questions about what Oxford is doing in preparation, that's important.
Yeah, that's really more what I was, along the line, just, I mean, we may not get anyone who uses it, but just, you know, just the fact that, you know, there's something out there. And we're gonna get questions like, is LNJ's open? You know, like, is Home Depot open? Can I go to Market Basket? But, but that's okay, you know, that's kind of what we, you know, that's what we do.
Well, this is a hot tip from Market Basket that not everybody's gonna know about, but I do because I talked with the general manager because I'm looking at if our meals were interrupted for our Tri-Valley services at any point in time. We're developing a contingency plan for that. But the one thing that's really nice about Market Basket is they basically wholly own their own distribution centers. So they're not at the sort of the mercy of some of these other big supermarkets or retail stores for the way that the restocking and the shipments are, have been, you know, really accelerated. And normally, they were on a different type of schedule. So they might get cleared out rather quickly, which has been happening. But their restocking is absolutely happening. You know, their biggest concern will be, you know, a lot of students that work there, they're young people. And the last Thursday, the general manager said, and he's worked there for either 33 or 34 years, that it was the single busiest day in the history of Market Basket at any point in time. And so you have a lot of students that are, you know, thousands of people are coming in, they're buying groceries. So we'll see how, you know, how all of that plays out over time. But people are been, you know, making sure that they have enough groceries. You know, I'm hoping that, you know, particularly for Market Basket, will continue to have a sort of a seamlessness about restocking and replenishing over time, you know. I'm hoping that, you know, everyone pulls together with all the local restaurants and the like. And if they can continue getting their shipments of their food products and everything, that they'll be very innovative over being able to do this grab-and-go, you know, delivery at home and/or people coming up and, you know, being able to do takeout. So hopefully all that will work, you know. But on our website right now, we do have that very bright alert, and that gets updated with the Mass Department of Public Health. And so when people have real questions to see what's happening, hopefully they go to that with all the other things.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, on Market Basket. Of course, I was in there a couple of days ago and I couldn't believe the people were shoulder to shoulder in there. And we know what effect being that close can cause. And of course, the President's come out and said so many in a given area at any given time, whether it's 50, some governors have said 25 and some 10. Now, how does that affect supermarkets like Market Basket? Are they gonna allow a certain number of people in a certain amount of time? Will there be somebody at the door headcounting to allow people in?
Well, see, I agree with you. I don't think that has been addressed yet by either the state or federal government. I think people are trying to say that the retail shops and the supermarkets should practice good social distancing and people should stay six, you know, feet away. People shouldn't be backed up line in line while they're waiting in line. But I think the only way, to your point, that you can make that happen, if after this rush, you know, happens, and if there's a stay order in place, you know, people may not be going to supermarkets either in the near future. You know, it may be something where deliveries will be made, you know, through an Instacart or something like that where people can still get groceries, but the supermarkets may not stay open based on, you know, emergency orders. Right now they are, but I think that's because the federal government and the states are recognizing that they, people gotta get food enough to get to, you know, be able to stay home for a long enough period if they are ordered to shelter in place. Now, out in San Francisco, people are being ordered to shelter in place, right? So I don't know, I think that's an evolving situation. But I think we can have that conversation, the Board of Health Agent, the General Management and our Board of Health Chair, about how can they enact something like that? Because, you know, even outside, you could give people a lot more room to not be there. You could give people numbers and say, go to your cars and, you know, we'll hold up, you know, 10 to, to, you know, 50 can come in now. And then, you know, 50 to 100 can come in next, you know. They'll have a way that they can do it, but right now it's not there.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it doesn't make sense for certain businesses to be limited and to have these big box stores like that that have so many people that are in close proximity not following this.
Right.
You know, we got a Walmart here in this community, and we got a Market Basket. Two places that are very, very concerning to me as a senior citizen. And I just don't think it's right to kind of exclude them.
Right.
Now, another concern that I have is, and I don't think anybody wants to address it, but when they're talking about so many people at a time in a public facility, funerals, wakes, I've seen people lined up to go into Givner's funeral home for a wake. Now, talk about people being close. Sometimes these people are shoulder to shoulder, back to back. And, you know, is there any control there? Is it, are these people gonna allow so many people in at a time? Or just let everybody go in like they have been, standing in line, two inches apart from each other? Shouldn't there be some kind of guidelines for them? That, you know, if people are gonna come, fine, but keep your space? So many at a time coming into the building? I mean, it just seems like there should be rules for places like that as well.
There is. I mean, the new order from the Governor on the limiting for the 25 does apply to, you know, funeral homes. It does apply to our VFWs or private clubs. So that was just, that was since last night, right? So that's why I say stay tuned, because some of those things that seemed like we could control them, you know, weddings, all of those kinds of, even family events, if they're in a area where they were anticipating being in and renting a place, they would be, they would no longer be able to do that. This, this order applies to them as well. So hopefully the funeral pagers will also understand that. But I think, you know, the biggest thing was to, you know, make sure our eateries and our private clubs and the fitness places got the first round of that. But we will be making sure that some of these other establishments understand. You know, it's all in the enforcement, correct? You know, sometimes, you know, people will try to get away with it as long, it's not that they're trying to get away with it. You know, it's, it's a major change in the way people have come to accept and anticipate, you know, norms that we have. Burying somebody, having a wedding, having an anniversary, you know, being able to shop, going to the doctors, things like that. So we're trying to get people as much as possible with this new order to get ready for the 17th. But tomorrow, additional, I think, efforts will be made to hit some of those others. So it's a very good point, and I appreciate it.
And I think we can also have our agent get in contact with Givner's and find out if they have a plan in place for how they're addressing it as well. But I think, you know, I, I share your concern with Market Basket and Walmart and things like that. And I'm kind of at a catch-22 from my perspective because they both have, they have food, they have the things that people need. And so to be able to ban that, and I think that we really need to, all of us, you know, practice social distancing. And when you're in line, don't be right up against somebody. So be at least an arm's length away is really kind of what they're saying, or up to six feet away. And yes, it's, it's not great, but if someone sees you doing that, then it's easier for someone else to do that. So it's really hard because we can't really close down or, you know, or stop so many people from going in because people need food, people need groceries. And that's the reason why it was excluded from this order. It's tough, it's really hard, I agree.
But sometimes you have to wait.
I agree. I agree. I mean, I work, I work at a hospital right now. I mean, we're congregating all the time, but we're excluded because it's the nature of what we do. So, you know, it's, it's tough, it's really hard.
Yeah, if I may have another question. My main concern on this whole thing, especially being a public official, is of course, we are responsible and are concerned about the safety of not only the residents of this community, but our first responders. I wanna know how we stand as far as equipment is concerned with our EMTs. These people are out These people are out there, they don't know what they're gonna face. Do we have enough masks?
Yes.
Do we have enough paper-covered suits?
Yes, right now.
Okay. I heard that masks are used more than once, is that a fact?
There's, there's questions right now about certain places that have actually looked at, I'm talking about clinical places, where typically, you know, to practice really good stuff is your one and done. And, you know, for N ninety-five masks, I know for a fact that both the station, for the regular station and the north station have a number of masks there. We also have a number of supplies and, you know, I can bring those numbers to you. One of the things that I think we have done long before this evening was to look at the kinds of supplies we did have for regular adult masks and N ninety-five masks, but knowing the amount of, right now, traditional calls that we would be getting, that they do. They're on back order for any further. We're actually talking with Region Two, MEMA, for any additional supplies that we can get. But for protective gear in terms of gloves and N ninety-five masks, right now, for our first responders who are being taught before that, we do. We have a really, I think, in comparison to some places, a much healthier supply. So, and I know that our fire chief and the Board of Health have two different types of supplies.
Yep.
I just, I'm concerned because I don't, I want it to be one and done.
It's not fifty, it's not a hundred.
It should be one and done, they shouldn't use it.
Right.
One mask for a second call or a third call.
So this is, this is gonna be the problem that we encounter, okay? Because there are clinics already that are prepping for this. Because some clinics don't even have the same kind of number of masks that some first responder towns do, you know. So it's not one of those things. So those clinics are already talking about how you actually practice, you know, being able to use a mask more than once. So, you know, that's if our federal peers and our, you know, MEMA responders, you know, don't help us when we need additional supplies. So there is sort of a two-tiered system of questioning that's going on by our Region Two. And that is another avenue we're going to, we are pursuing to see what we can get from them in addition to what we have already.
And I, to address that even more, I did have a conversation with Tom Purcell over the weekend with regards to our EMTs. And I asked what the screening questions were prior to EMTs actually going to residents to pick patients up or to seek that treatment. And I, so he assured me that there were questions so that if anybody screened in during triage with any type of respiratory illness whatsoever, that they would be going into the house prepared before they get there versus going in, finding out it's a respiratory issue, potentially being exposed, and then dawning the appropriate personal protective.
And that was implemented by both Chief Sad and Chief McDonald. So that, you know, go ahead.
That's a good move. Just making sure that our dispatchers are asking these questions.
They were asking in advance.
Yes, supposed to be.
Yes, no, I've been listening, I heard them ask those questions. You know, they had somebody who actually had a fever, but also had what appeared to be a phlebitis or maybe an infection in their leg. But they treated it as somebody who could be, you know, a COVID-nineteen person, presumptive case or not. So, you know, those are kinds of things. You know, we are hearing different places where maybe other communities weren't, you know, didn't have that dispatch protocol for asking those questions in place. But, you know, they are asking that and that's gonna be, you know, very important as we go forward. Of course, all this changes when the dynamics change. So everybody can have an opinion about how many masks we need or this and that. We have whatever supplies that we have on hand. Like I said, I was more concerned about having a lot less. I will tell you that when we ask for this inventory going back into January, you know, at least back then, I could look and, you know, feel comfortable with that. I mean, when we start talking about who's gonna be accessing that, that is gonna be for our first responders at this point in time. You know, so it's not like a different type of emergency situation where, you know, it's residents that we're handing it out to, you know, because it's some kind of mass, you know, distribution. You know, there's a lot of adult masks that we have. And that might be something that also becomes very fundamental as we go forward with how do we use, you know, those to benefit other people who may not be first responders, even if it's not an N ninety-five mask, you know.
I had a question from a resident regarding schools. Of course, our schools are out now and for, and for good reason, and I think everybody understands that. But the question that was raised to me is, well, if we're letting these children stay home, what, what control do we really have with our children? Can they go out? Can they visit with neighbors? You know, in school, they're isolated. Their home, they're all over the place, they're all over the neighborhood, and then they come back and bring it into your office.
John, I think, you know, you are the overseeing emeritus, you know, father of this community. You, you have that instinct, you're wondering if parents are gonna be parents. You know, we're dealing with this massive, you know, turning upside down of operations and things. I, I appreciate that message. I would ask you to continue to plead with people, to exercise parental responsibility and to make sure that people understand how serious this is. And to prevent their children from being exposed or becoming vector transmitters to other people who are seniors or anything else.
A lot of parents think it's a holiday, the kids think it's a holiday.
I understand.
Now, we have a playground here in Oxford. We have basketball courts, tennis courts, those ought to be closed. Treasure, Treasure Island over here for the little toddlers and kids, you don't want kids going there.
No, and that's another place that is being shut down. It was like another thing that wasn't really talked about until we started talking about today. We will be putting laminated messages, we can't sanitize the playgrounds and they shouldn't be a place. But, but these are the things that unless we specifically say it, it doesn't happen, you know. And we are gonna get to the very real, I think, reality at some point where we do talk about what happens if our first responders go down. And, you know, but they're no different, the nurses working in a hospital, doctors working in a hospital. When people go down and they're sick, you know, when they're sick, yes, they're, they're put into their own isolation and they gotta be, but anybody who happened to be around them, that whole self-isolation in place doesn't apply to people who are doing life-saving until we, you know, figure out whether the National Guard and other people are gonna be coming. So our both chiefs are working on plans to figure out how to, how to address that. Because that's why we, we need those people who are instrumental on the front lines. It's an unsettling feeling as a spouse who has a loved one who is a nurse, a physician's assistant, a doctor, a police officer, a, you know, a firefighter, a paramedic, you know, basic life EMT. But these are gonna be the essential workforce that is gonna need to be able to be as protected as possible, but also, you know, we, we, we need them as much as possible.
Exactly, and I'm glad, you know, we see it that way because they're the front lines. And these people, you gotta give them credit because there's not a lot of people that will do those types of jobs in this type of a situation, especially where you have a pandemic. You know, they're putting their families in danger, the list goes on about things that could happen that affects their personal lives. So we've really gotta be on top of protecting them, both fire, EMS, police.
But part of that too, speaking of a healthcare professional, you know, it's all about self-accountability, right? And knowing that I need to put on appropriate protective equipment to protect myself and my family. And so there also has to be that piece of it too as well, that they're wearing what they need to be and that others are holding them accountable and that each other is holding them accountable for that. Hey, don't go in there and put that mask on. I did that all day today, I walked around, I was like, tie your gown up, how come your shield's not on? All day in the hospital with nurses. So it's, it's all about, you have to know what, you have to know what's going on, you have to really do that yourself. Yes, we can put so many measures in place to protect them, but unless they're gonna protect themselves and follow those measures, then there's nothing we can do. And that's a catch-22, it's very hard, healthcare professionals, we're stubborn, we're very stubborn.
You know, and there may also come a time period where even the way that we operationalize using our first responders is gonna need to take a, you know, a dramatic change. You know, right now, people go home, you know, after a shift and then with their families. We, we don't know where this is gonna go. We might be, you know, putting up bunks that are separated in another area in town and people will not be allowed to go to their homes, to be interacting with wives and fathers and grandfathers that, you know, seem to be symptomatic, but they might not wanna place them either A in risk or they themselves become, you know, potentially exposed to other people who are still going grocery shopping and doing those kinds of things. So I think that day may come, but I think the state and all of the healthcare institutions are gonna be making that abundantly clear when that happens, so.
I think this is just something that we're gonna have to be continually updating from week to week.
Yes.
We see how far it's changed just in the past two weeks.
Yeah.
And now they're predicting that this could go right through the summer. So, you know, this, this isn't anything that's gonna be corrected overnight.
Agreed.
So we've gotta keep updated and I appreciate.
Thank you.
People like yourselves that are willing to, to stay on top of this, to let us know so that we can let the community know what's, what's happening here.
Between delivering the budget last week and, you know, having, you know, in advance, multiple, multiple meetings, conference calls, all of that. And we're all doing our part, you know, whether it's regionally talking with other town managers and listening in on state, federal, you know, MEMA calls. Tonight, they did declare a state of emergen, not a state of emergency, they were actually sending out their situational awareness, which typically we get when we're gonna get a storm, right? So that's their first real situational awareness. And again, they're reemphasizing all these things because we are not alone, understanding that there's a lot of information being thrown at people. I will say that all of the department heads and the staff of this town and particularly, you know, the volunteers on the Board of Health as well as our Board of Health Agent and our public health nurses have been, some of them are, you know, are just exhausted trying to change the entire direction of everything that they do to think about things that they haven't ever thought about, you know. And we've got people doing, you know, cross-functional jobs now that we weren't ever thinking we were gonna have to do. So, so I do have, you know, continued confidence in that regard, but, you know, it is a fluid situation.
All right, thank you.
Cynthia.
Sure.
I just have one other question with regard to the mandated school closing. Is our school staff still working during the closing?
As far as I knew, that they were still there. I think that that was one of the things that the acting superintendent today was going to actually try to address. But I also think she was looking for an ability to do, you know, a total cleansing of the school. So honestly, today was just one of those days where she was one of the people I couldn't get to, to do a follow-up. But tonight I will. We were talking all weekend, you know, eleven, twelve, you know, midnight on Friday and Sunday, of some of the things she was gonna be trying to enact. So she's just stepped into a role as an acting superintendent and has been not an easy thing with all of this other stuff, but I will find out.
Is, well, is this school gonna be close to the general public?
I think it is, I think it is, I think it's only for employees. You know, I don't think parents are being, they shouldn't be at this point in time. I would have thought that that would have been, you know, one of the things I think they talked about is being able to potentially get some teaching instructional materials to students and they're thinking that maybe, you know, they do a drive-up for students similar to being able to get lunch programs. But that hasn't even been operationalized.
The reason that I ask is at our last board meeting, Mr. Doyle asked us to approve temporary signage for a church that's at the high school.
Oh, yeah.
And where we have no say over church and state, separation of church and state, how does that affect the fact that this church is doing business out of the high school?
That would be a public assembly that can't happen. Yeah, yeah. And I'll, I'll remind them that, yeah, all of that stuff. And I don't think they want any of that going on.
I just don't wanna put our faculty at risk.
Sure.
If people are still, and I don't have a problem with church at all, that's not where I'm going with that at all. I'm just more looking out for our town employees more than anything else at this point.
Yeah, they are actually included within that order.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
I didn't realize church.
Faith-based, yep, faith-based, it says it very clearly.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Ben.
So the school employees are still in the building together?
I, I don't know. When you say together, you know, they're in separate classrooms and stuff like that. So I don't know what happened today. I just know that, you know, the order went out on Friday. They might be allowing, you know, teachers to be able to get stuff, to figure out how to work remotely. You have to remember that some of this decision-making was done very late on Friday and they're still trying to figure out ways, especially if this goes for months and months. You know, people are gonna say, well, you know, why didn't the teachers have at some point an ability to get students' materials or to be able to, to communicate with one another? So some of those things are really tall orders to do in a very short period of time. So, and I can't speak for that, I mean, so.
No, I know, but you look at the private sector, businesses.
No, they're, no, not all businesses, only.
No, but there's a lot of businesses that have cleaned out their, their establishments and people are working from home, I know the state colleges, things like that. My daughter, you know, she's in an office area, but she's not near anyone, but they've shut that out so that.
And that may have happened today, I honestly.
I can't believe that we'd still be allowing that.
I, I can't say, that's why I'm not gonna say. And I don't wanna lament on it because it may not be true and it's just a lot to... So I will, I will find out and let the board know, you know. And I apologize for not having that answer at my fingertips today.
You have a lot on your plate, so.
Just, just a little bit.
Understood.
So I don't know if the board would think that at this time it would be a good moment to actually take a look at the, the town of Oxford declared declaration of emergency. I have spoken with legal counsel, they thought it was a good idea. They understand my concerns about wanting to make sure that we're never gonna be refused any assistance because we didn't make a local public declaration and it'd make us eligible for some other things. So there's actually two motions. One is, we're asking you to declare the state of emergency as it's written and to sign that this evening. And then the other motion has to do with also saying that the town of Oxford would be accepting of any funding assistance from the federal government, the state government or any donations or otherwise that relate to this pandemic. So that it will already be codified and if we have to go back to it, we will.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
So, um, not that I'm ever really a follower in this matter, but is any other communities declared the state of emergency?
They have.
Yep. Okay, all right. I, I would be, I'm okay with this, but I, I want to, if I can, I would ask that we be very, what's the word that I wanna use here? I don't wanna go over the top with this, I don't wanna create panic. I don't want, I don't want, I would, I really don't wanna hear like, we asked Market Basket to shut down or anything along those lines. I would just ask that we do this with the skew of common sense. Not that I think that we wouldn't, but I just feel compelled to kind of say that out loud. Because even though, you know, maybe at the state level, we haven't shut things down, it doesn't mean that they won't, but at the same time, I think that by doing certain things, it would create a level of panic that we don't really wanna go to. I mean, like I said, I'm okay with it. And I would, I would just ask that if we do make those types of decisions, like just for example, like if you decided to, you know, shut down the salon, nail salons or something, if we could somehow, if that could be kind of communicated back to us? I don't know if there's like a list or something that we can, just so that we know.
Oh, I think you're gonna continue to get updates because there's no way else to, you know, get this information. We might suggest there's something that it would be important for us to consider because we see a number of people, you know, who are, you know, continuing to be violators. You know, there's a whole, you know, thing that we're looking at now and, you know, when do we call upon our public safety to assist us in encouraging people? When does this board invoke its, its ability to, you know, tell an establishment, you know, you need to follow an order? It's not just about shutting down, it could be, maybe someone loses their license altogether and then has to come back after, you know, this period of time to sit before the board and answer to it. It might be monetary, sometimes people answer to that. But the whole point for this really, right now, like I said, is to make sure we are able to, you know, be eligible for any kind of funding assistance that comes and also, you know, allows us to accept that funding assistance. Should it be in any particular, you know, branch of government and/or grant program that we could be eligible for.
Okay, that's fair enough.
You know, there are things that the Board of. You know, there are things that the Board of Health, you know, certainly with the state's support, you know, can, can try to enforce if we feel it's in the best interest. But the whole point for Kerry here tonight is to encourage our board to also understand we've got a partnership going and all the department heads have a partnership going. And, you know, we're not gonna do those kinds of, I think, major local initiatives without absolutely talking to everybody about it.
We want to.
To just jump on that. I think the town would be guided by the state, that we're not gonna put our head out there, you know, and do things.
Agreed.
Um, even talking about Market Basket or something like that. I think if that really became a major issue, then you have a discussion with them, you know, to see, hey, you know, we need to work on that, not shut down. I don't, unless it was a state thing, you know, so.
So, just so that you know.
I don't think anything we're doing here is, is to raise the level of panic at all. We're just trying to cover the town so that, you know, there isn't something we can't, that won't help us later on as we go along. So, I think that's, so far, everything we've done, you know, we've been proactive, or I should say, we have, you, you being our leader of the town has been very proactive and things have been stepping along and then boom, come to find out it's what the state's doing anyways, so.
So, this, you know, declaring this local state of emergency was one of the conversations people were having, uh, you know, through our regional, we're having a regional phone-in, all the managers. And, you know, like I said, there are a number of communities that either already have or are just on the verge of doing it, including, like I said, places like Upton and Worcester and a lot of other establishments, I wanna say, I think Hudson. So, you know, they, you're gonna see this ripple effect and people are asking, where are you gonna do it? And I explained, yes, we were going forward to do it. The other thing is, we have actually been educating the state. You know, the school districts got on the phone with the commissioner. The governor wasn't shutting all the schools down. What you saw is a rippling effect. Districts were feeling that, you know, some made the decision, you know, for at least two weeks, at least three weeks. Other districts were like, well, you know, you know, we, we don't know. We're looking for direction from the state. Commissioner got on a call with them on Friday morning, you know, said, well, I'll support you whichever way you wanna go. It wasn't like we are gonna shut them down. And then by evening, you know, that we, they knew that the governor was gonna come the next day and say, you know, you know, maybe he's gonna make an announcement. But even in absence of that, it was the Worcester County superintendents who got back on a conference call with themselves and said, we're going to bind together because we're not getting good direction from the state. Right? And now we're giving them information all the way up through the municipal side about some of these weird, you know, things that are falling, you know, aside right now, like, you know, zoning and planning board statutes and the limitations we have and are forced to have by state statutes. So, they're, they're actually filing legislation and we're giving all that kind of information. So, you know, we're all in this together. We gotta educate them. They gotta be able to help us when we can. And, you know, I know we can get through it. It's just a matter of, it's a lot to take in and, you know, we'll have to keep updating people.
All right. Well, then, I move in light of the rapidly evolving instances of the COVID-19 in the Commonwealth and burdens it will place on local government that the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt the following Declaration of Emergency. Town of Oxford declares of emergency whereas the 2019 Nobel coronavirus, which is COVID-19, is a highly contagious and potentially fatal respiratory disease, prevalence of which is increasingly rapidly throughout the world, inclusive of the United States and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas on March 11, 2020, the World Health Organization designated the COVID-19 outbreak a pandemic health emergency. Whereas on March 10, 2020, the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts issued a Declaration of the State of Emergency to respond to COVID-19. And whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States announced a National Declaration of Emergency. And whereas on March 15, 2020, Governor Baker announced emergency actions to respond to the evolving COVID-19 public health emergency impacting the Commonwealth, including prohibitions on public gatherings of 25 or more people and prohibiting on premises consumption of food or drink at bars and restaurants from March 17, 2020 until April 6, 2020, as well as suspension of elementary and secondary school educational operations from March 17, 2020 until April 6, 2020. And whereas the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager of Oxford and its Board of Health in consultation with the State Department of Public Health has determined that the COVID-19 presents a major disaster which possesses an immediate threat to the public health, safety, and general welfare of people residing both within and outside of Oxford. And whereas the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Oxford and its Board of Health have determined that immediate public action is needed in order to prevent or minimize the spread of COVID-19 by and among the people of Oxford. And whereas it is critical to take additional steps to prepare for, respond to, and mitigate the spread of COVID-19 to protect the health and welfare of the people of Oxford. And whereas declaring a state of emergency will facilitate and expedite the use of resources to produce, to protect persons from the impact of COVID-19, including but not limited to emergency expenditures pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 31, and limitations on operating hours and access to public buildings. And whereas the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager of Oxford and the Oxford Board of Health recommend that a state of emergency be declared in the Town of Oxford. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager of Oxford and the Board of Health of the Oxford, Massachusetts hereby declare that as of March 16, 2020, a state of emergency exists in the Town of Oxford. This Declaration of Emergency shall remain in effect until further notice is given pursuant to our judgment and that the conditions leading to this declaration no longer exist.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any comment? Call for a vote.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Well, yes, that's four and five in the affirmative. That declaration is approved. Now, I make a motion that I move that Town of Oxford accept all state and federal funding assistance which may be available to the town in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic and subsequent recovery efforts. I further move the Town of Oxford to accept all monetary and in-kind donations while there is a declared state of emergency in Massachusetts.
Second.
Okay, so a motion and a second. Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes. Five in the affirmative. That motion passes.
Great. And we have the actual declaration should be up there to begin the signing process. I'll move to the next section of the agenda, Mr. Chairman, so that I can explain to the board. It's entitled Open Meeting Law. One of the things that we're being encouraged to do, both through the state of emergency declared by the governor, is to consider the sort of the suspension of actual provisions within the open meeting law and/or the relaxing of them. So, we've been talking to our legal counsel about, in the event, because we're dealing with a restriction for public assembly that in order, and we may get to a point where none of us should be actually leaving our homes. So, we have already started to set up, or have actually set up Zoom as an account which allows upwards of 100 and we can go up as high as 300 or more than 1,000 if we needed to allow people from their own computer at home to be able to participate and see one another while an actual meeting was taking place. So, we could do that and also provide to the public an opportunity to see that. But in the absence of actually even doing that, the requirements under the new relaxed provisions also say it can be just a designated phone line because we typically don't have a public forum. The whole point for remote participation has more to do with encouraging the boards and committees not to assemble if at all possible. But if they have, you know, you have a public hearing that absolutely has to be done and you need to have that person in front of you, that would be somebody who could also remote in and what happens is you see one another when you're speaking and can actually participate in that regard. And then we may, obviously, on every agenda, if we have the public's ability to remote in and/or use a telephone designated line, we would set that up. So, that would be, you know, and we're gonna obviously try to film everything to the best possible and, you know, record as we go forward. So, those are the things that we're trying to do. So, the first item is for the board to actually include language that actually says, this is what we're gonna do. We have a remote participation, but this is how we're going to actually try to make sure that we uphold the provisions of even the relaxed open meeting law and embrace that. And the second part of the motion is actually taking that language and saying, we're gonna put it on every agenda that's posted so that the public understands that, you know, they may not be allowed to attend in person, but we're gonna make every attempt and effort to allow the public to still have access. And the third motion has to do with saying that every board and committee that uses the remote ability will have to actually state, you know, before they start their meeting or at the top of their meeting, that this is why we're doing this and this is the language up above if they read that. And of course, we wanna have good detailed, you know, the votes that are taken and the actual minutes as well.
Well, I move that the open meeting law notice posted by boards and committees of the town under General Law Chapter 38, Subsection 18 and 20 include language similar to the following. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meeting in the Town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meetings as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of meetings of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings.
Second.
Let's move this and second it. Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes. Five in the affirmative. Motion carries. I move that the following statement be read at the beginning of all public meetings. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the Town of Oxford are being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order.
Second.
Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. Motion carries. And I move that at any meeting of the town boards and committees where remote participation is used, that roll call votes in detailed minutes be taken.
Second.
Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes. Five in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda has to do with what we're referring to as COVID mitigating measures. And again, this is considered to be an important undertaking that this board will make to send a message to all our boards and committees that they need to continue to undertake, not just the regular employees that are here, but those people who are chairman and members of boards to look and recognize that we are under this declared state of emergency and we need people to really rethink their agendas, minimize the kinds of resources that they might be very accustomed to of being there so that we're not diverting critical resources to things that really could be extended. We're asking board members to really look at, you know, what their agendas had coming up, working with any department head and/or themselves to say, is this something we can put off? And so, this motion actually handles that piece of it and we're also make a motion to, you know, explain to the public that if they really have a need, that they should actually feel comfortable and really be incentivized at this point to call ahead so that they're not standing right now waiting for an answer on something so that if there is a particular thing that's really necessary, that we can put that together. You know, if we do completely close the building, you know, we're still gonna have to come up with a way that people can access certain things. So, I want people to get used to calling ahead if they need a marriage, you know, certificate or, or application for, for those kinds of things because some people are thinking in the fall and they don't know. If they don't start that process now, that those are things that can be, you know, called ahead and we can help prepare and take that information long before they get in the building and hopefully have it all set and they can take it. So, it also asks people, you know, from the public, for residents, to actually, you know, to call ahead and to ensure that we can, you know, provide protective mannerisms for our employees and to our elected leaders. We don't want anything to happen to you.
Is this something that'll be conveyed to the public so that?
Yes. So, this is like, all of this will. And that's why, and this is something that is not germane just to us. There's other communities that doing as legal counsel that talked about that too. Again, it's a reaffirmation of, and getting other boards and committees from your direction to also undertake this. So, it's, it's sort of putting it out there for the public to understand that they may want something to happen really quick and now we've created this, this motion about, you know, mitigating measures on purpose in advance because we, we know that this may get to be a very difficult thing and people's expectations initially might be quite high when they're at home, you know, because they're not ill and they haven't seen that tidal wave of cases and it hasn't hit them yet. So, these are things to put in place now so that we can communicate to the public and let them know that we also have mitigating measures in form of a vote that we're asking boards and, you know, department heads and everybody to take under advisement. Go.
Oh, yes.
In addition to that, if the town employees are gonna be taking call aheads and it's determined that the person should come in and grab paperwork or something, maybe make the determination if it can be emailed or if they really have to come in person, our employees should not be afraid to do a pre-screen of those people. Have they had a cough, shortness of breath, fever within the past week? And if the answers are yes, then I don't think the people should be coming in. So, just to limit exposure any further to our employees. And those, it's just the three simple things that everybody's asking. Our dispatch are asking people who call 911 if they're short of breath, cough, fever, just so that our first responders can better protect themselves. I think our town employees should be allowed to ask those questions also if they're doing call ahead.
So, we can modify this if you would like for language. I think it would be appropriate under the second to the last phrase where it says, "Further, at all residents requested to call ahead for any matter which they need help." We could insert language that would say to allow employees to pre-screen requests and use alternative methods to, to meet the needs of such requests. Does that sound good?
I think that's appropriate, just to minimize exposure.
To pre-screen what?
Requests, yeah. To allow employees to pre-screen residents, you know, because we're talking there and the other one, residents' requests and use alternative methods if possible to address such requests.
Can I?
Sure.
Go ahead. So, one thing to add for some pre-screening, other than cough, fever, is also travel. So, all of our European countries, the list is very, very long right now. So if there was any recent travel as well, so I would add that as that is one of our screen questions for visitors coming into the hospital right now.
Or attendance on a biogen.
All right. I move that the Board of Selectmen encourage boards and committees to undertake only what needs to be done for the next three weeks while schools are closed and there is a governor declared state of emergency prohibiting gatherings of 25 or more. That meeting agendas be minimized and that non-critical business matters be delayed so as to avoid, to the extent possible, extensive decision making of meetings not otherwise open to the public, that boards and committees with pending deadlines seek extensions from applicants for a period of 90 days or less for the purpose of ensuring that such matters, if not emergent in nature, do not divert resources from the town's emergency response. And furthermore, that all residents are requested to call ahead for any matter for which they need help, to allow employees to pre-screen residents' requests and use alternative methods if possible to address such requests. The system will allow town staff an opportunity to ensure that we can meet their needs in the most protected manner for the town employee and the public generally.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Yes.
Can I just, can we modify it a little bit further to specifically indicate that the employees should be pre-screening the residents and asking specifically if they have fever, cough, respiratory, or travel within the last week?
So.
So it's not just pre-screening their requests to see if we can do it electronically, but also to ensure that if we can't do it electronically, they're only coming into the building if they're healthy? I think that's what Mike was getting at.
Yes.
I mean, aren't we doing that though by the motion? Pre-screening?
Pre-screening means?
Pre-screen could mean a lot of things. The way he said it was pre-screening to use alternative methods if possible, that doesn't necessarily mean, like, if I can send you an email instead of you coming in to get a packet, that's how I'm interpreting alternative methods. If it's something that you can't use alternative methods for, I think we need protections in place for our staff that a potentially exposed resident isn't coming in to get whatever they can't get electronically. I think that, is that what you were getting at, Mike?
Yes, so that we're pre-screening those specific questions. So, motion.
Which, which is what we already discussed and I presume that's what pre-screening meant is they were going to ask those questions. Have you been out of the country, like you stated?
Do we need to include?
I think that is something that I would want to run by our, you know, I think there's an element of training that would be required, you know, because we're asking people about their states of health. I think it's something we should run by our Board of Health and also our legal counsel about what we can or cannot ask. We may not be in this, you know, realm of right now of pre-screening for very long, but right now, I mean, you know, for residents, you know, I don't know. I don't have an answer for that right now. I understand the concern for both, but I also, you know, dispatch doing it, first responders doing it is one thing, but I think that the notion of trying to make a decision at that moment about whether someone has been out of the state, you know, versus been out of the country or, you know, whether someone has felt well, then you're getting into questions about, then identifying that person in a way that might, I don't know, that might actually be incorrect. And that's why you need, I think, professional people who ask those questions to ascertain that.
Maybe it's a sign that we can put on posts on all the exterior doors of the building.
And yes, that no one should come in being, you know, having recently experienced. That is happening in other communities so that the onus becomes on the individual not to enter the building should they be, you know, having been sick or anything. You know, like I said, I think we're just on the precipice of making some of these decisions and, you know, until, you know, we completely close down, I don't think it's unreasonable to put a signage that says, you know, please do not into the building if you have been recently sick for any reason.
John, I have a concern about the legality of it all. You know, there's so much emphasis on HIPAA these days. You're afraid to ask certain questions that involve medical situations. Now, I would feel more comfortable if I get an opinion from counsel in regard to us asking these types of specific questions that relate to health. I mean, I could see a professional health individual asking those questions, but we non-professionals asking those questions, to me, I think it's a little too deep. Secondly, what's the legality about whether or not these people have to answer those questions? They have a right under the First Amendment, okay? And there's protection there for them. So, before we be that specific, I think we ought to get this clarified legally. I think that the way it is written in the assertions that we made should be sufficient enough for us for now until we can get better clarification. And I understand your point. It's well taken, but I think we ought to be on the safe side on this to get some clarification legally.
Okay. I agree, you know, and that's why I kind of like the motion as it is, you know, because it is, gives you a little leeway, but it can get real specific if we legally have.
I mean, there could be, you know, if it's a defined order, and this is not, this is mitigating measures, it's not a defined order that we're filing to say that, you know, all, you know, the public will be barred from any entry into the town hall. You know, like I said, I think that we can get to that point if we need to by having, you know, the board that I think would make that order and make sure that we would have the backup to do that legally, you know? So, I think your points are well taken. I just think there needs to be a little more vetting and, you know, we can get that answer pretty quick.
Well, the other thing is that we're requesting the residents. We're not requiring, you know, we're, to me, that's a big word. We're just requesting you call ahead so we can, you know, ask a few questions, simple questions. If they don't, you know, it's not a matter of we're like, oh, we're not going to talk to you or deal with you at all, I'm sure. You know, so, that's my interpretation. Any other comments? We do still have a motion and a second? All right, then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And now we conclude, Mr. Chairman.
So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at, oops, excuse me.
I have a question of the Town Manager over stuff. It's not related to public health, COVID-19 or whatever. I've got a number of people who have approached me and asked me why trees on Howard Road have been wrapped in boards and fences around these trees? Are they contaminated? What's going on?
No, no. It's actually the contractor. I saw that too. The contractor obviously is taking, you know, the actual trees, you know, and their ability to survive very seriously. So, knowing that there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment, what they try to do is mitigate harm to existing shade trees. And from my understanding, they put that as a way of trying to alert people who are working to not do damage. I mean, they could be lifting big pipes, they could be doing it, and they might be stored on one property and it can be very easy to not pay attention to where you're at. So, that is one of the things that this particular contractor is doing to help us protect our shade trees. It's not for gypsy moths because somebody asked that. Yeah, I know, I know. I know we've not seen that, but this contractor is doing that.
They must be calling you and me too. I already asked that question. It's all related. Sean didn't even know. He said, I don't think it's all.
Well, no, he hadn't seen it yet.
It seemed to be on private property as well.
He hadn't seen it yet. And I had seen it and I said to Sean, it looks just like what you would expect, you know? It's almost like a rim of faring around it with a grid of wire to support the tree, but from damage, you know? Because if you hit the bark and the xylem, which, you know, can make a tree become infected and then, you know, you know, die, it's a way of trying to prevent that from happening. I don't know.
Or the contractor having to replace somebody's tree. So, that's an expense, especially when it's a nice grown maple or something like that.
Sorry for the questions, man. We can alert everybody on Facebook.
All right. I entertain a motion for John and if nobody else has a question.
I make a motion. I second that motion.
Maybe entertain the motion.
Oh, I make that motion.
I second that motion.
I'll vote a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.